Hi Linda, I see your hand is raised.
Okay, am I on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for us?
No, sorry.
Okay. We'll, we'll open up like the public comment portion and then when we get to the item, there'll be another portion and then I'll let everybody speak at that time.
That's great. I just got online and this is the first time I've done it this way, so apologize.
Oh no, you're totally fine.
Thank you for doing this because there's no way I could get down and up my hill. Not possible.
Yeah, yeah, it was getting kind of nasty out there.
Yeah.
I'm glad this worked out.
Thank you. Okay, I'm lowering my hand.
So are you, are you still at City Hall?
Um, so I stayed up until about 3:30 ish and then they closed all the facilities down. And I was looking at the roads and they were starting to get really gross up in my neighborhood. So I'm glad I, so made the decision to head back and I'm glad I did because up and all the way down 30th and all the way down Centennial, I was sliding all over the place and so was everyone else.
Yeah, I'm glad you got home. It's.
Yeah, it was, it just kind of came out of nowhere. It was like all melting and then suddenly, yeah, it just all stuck.
Yeah. Hopefully our panel will show up.
Yeah.
Was there any change to the link from what's on the website or is it the same link?
It's the same link.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And the only one I know Carrie's not going to be here. She had surgery, so she won't be here. But Harper said he'd be here, so hopefully they're all just logging on as we speak.
Hi Leanna, can you hear us okay?
Hi Karen, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay, Justin's here, yay. So there are two of us now.
I did get confirmation from Gloria too that she'll be able to join us.
Good. Oh, there's Mike, yay. Okay, one more. Hey, that's Mike, who's that?
That's Lily. Come here.
Hey Lily, how are you?
He heard you.
Oh. She's so cute.
You hear that? You're cute.
He's such a cute dog.
Okay, now we've got a quorum. We're getting there.
Hannah, is anybody there with you?
Um, so I ended up uh, just heading home. I was looking at the, they ended up closing like City Hall and all the city facilities. And I was looking at the road conditions near my house and I was like, oh, I don't know. So I ended up just heading home. I'm glad that I, I did those. Getting pretty nasty up here. So no, it's just me right now.
I guess we can give it a couple more minutes just to see.
Alan, I don't know why I'm not appearing, but I am here.
Okay. Your video won't start.
I've clicked on start video, but.
Okay, well.
I'm sure you could do without my pretty face.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll gut it out if we can. Hopefully you can, you know, we'll just, I'll try to remember to ask you. So let's see. Harper was going to come, but maybe he got held up or technical difficulties or something, so. I guess you can go ahead and start the meeting. So I will call the February 22nd special meeting of the Managed Springs Planning Commission to order and first item of business is roll call. Commissioner Casey.
Present.
Commissioner Graybill.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Latimer.
Present.
And Commissioner Armstrong.
Present, more or less.
Okay, well, that's good. You're here. So the first item is approval of the minutes of the February 8th meeting. Have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 8th, 2023 City Planning Commission meeting minutes.
And was there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so if there are no corrections or additions, all those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand if you have.
One minor typo, page three of the packet, Vice Chair Casey inspired by the height maximum was changed, the word height is misspelled.
Good, okay.
Just a typo.
Okay, then that correction, all those in favor, say aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, so next item is public comment on non-agenda items and this is an opportunity for the, anybody attending the meeting, if they want to make a comment on something that's not on the agenda, this would be the time to do so. And we don't really act on anything that's mentioned or taken over and considered if you're appropriate. So with that, if anybody in the audience would like to make a comment, just raise your hand. Okay. So Linda, could you state your name and address?
Linda Moreland, 37, Minnehaha. And I'm sorry, I was just going to let you know that I couldn't understand what you were saying a minute ago. It was real staticky. And there's also some like a TV or a radio in the background, so I didn't know. But when we were talking, I couldn't understand you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it sounds like whatever it was is gone now, so hopefully it'll be better. So seeing no, no other hands raised, we'll move on to our business meeting and I'll just start by describing the process we follow. I'll call an item for consideration. Planning staff will describe the applicant's request and will provide their analysis and findings based on the applicant's application. Following that, the applicant will have an opportunity to state their case and provide any additional information that they wish to provide to the commission. Planning commissioners may ask questions of staff or the applicant during this period. After the commission is finished with their questions, the hearing will be open for public comment from those in attendance. And you'll be able to state your thoughts regarding the item under consideration at that time. And after all, public comment has been heard, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. And commissioners will deliberate and act on the item under consideration by voting to support or deny the item. Or may vote to table the item if appropriate. As a commission deliberates, they will be guided by the zoning and subdivision codes. We're not a legislative body. We make our decisions based only on our interpretation of whether the request meets the criteria in the code. So before we start, do any commissioners have any conflicts or ex parte conversations to disclose? Okay, so seeing that and I'll point out that Harper Johnson just joined at what is it? 539. So with that, I'll call the first new business item is Major Development Plan 2301 at 701 Manitou Avenue, the Carnegie Library by Ratio Architects.
Great. I do want to do a super quick introduction and then I will pass it over to Chelsea. First, so this particular item is a little unique in that the city is actually the applicant. And quite a while back, or not quite a while, it was a few years ago. And Chelsea will dive into this in her presentation. The city hired Ratio Architects to develop a plan to make the Carnegie Library ADA accessible. In 2020, the library was closed due to an ADA complaint which led to this whole process. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chelsea with a staff presentation. We also do have our applicant from Ratio, or not applicant, our architect, Leanna, who will also do a quick presentation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to just give us a little bit of background information and I'll let Leanna go into detail about the design itself. So to start off, this is for the existing Manitou Springs Library at 701 Manitou Avenue. It's a 0.83 acre site in zoned public facilities. The library was originally built in 1911 and like Hannah said, closed in 2020 due to ADA non-compliance. The proposal is to expand the existing library, which is, yeah.
That has the slides versus like the presentation.
Oh. What was that?
A heads up, the PowerPoint slides, we're seeing your PowerPoint screen instead of a presentation screen.
Weird. Uh, let's see what I can do.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to give you.
No, thank you. Um, so let's just do it this way. How's that?
Uh, if you click or right-click in exit presenter's view or hide presenter view, yeah. Oh weird. Yeah, it's just.
One more, one more attempt at this. Let me.
They're having problems. Well, here I am.
Well, is there an X anywhere that you can put, that you can?
No.
Okay, then I would.
I can leave.
Okay, how's that look?
Good.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, okay.
Yeah.
Um. That's what I wanted to do. Okay, back on track. Um, so the proposal is to expand the existing 3,480 square, 86 square foot library by 2,950 square feet. Uh, the addition includes kind of a two-section addition. One part of it is a two-story addition to the south of the main library and that is to uh, house a, an ADA lift to connect the two levels. And the second portion is a garden level, single floor addition to the west of the library and that has a rooftop patio. Uh, this design is the result of approximately two years of engagement with the Manitou Springs community, including extensive work by the library task force. And this proposal has been evaluated under the existing zoning code as well as the recently adopted land use and development code. It does meet both codes in our opinion. Um, so for the findings and review criteria, as you could see in the staff report, there were quite a few review criteria. I'm going to give you a little bit of background and then I'll hit major points that are major points of concern. So, um, the proposal does meet all of the dimensional standards, meaning the building height setbacks, et cetera. It obviously needs the land use. Landscaping on the site exceeds standards in both codes, uh, so there will be new landscaping within the limits of disturbance by, uh, caused by this addition. But that limit of disturbance is designed to be as conservative as possible, which will help us maintain the existing park scape at the library lawn. The natural slope of the site will also be preserved to the extent possible, except for the footprint of the addition, which will obviously have to be leveled out for construction and the concrete pad for the ADA parking space. ADA parking spaces must be, I believe, less than a 2% slope. And so we need to construct a retaining wall in order to build up a level area for an ADA parking space on site. So lighting is one area of concern. The lighting plan notes two points which exceed the maximum illumination. Uh, both of those points exist because of the area that, so it's right on the rooftop patio that, right where it meets a window. And so because of that interior, interior lighting, plus the addition of the exterior lighting, they combine to exceed the maximum lighting threshold. That area is across the street from the school and not adjacent to any residential. It's screened from the parcel to the west by mature trees and the proposed fixtures are frosted glass globes and they're designed to be compatible with the existing lighting, uh, the historic fixtures on site. There are not full cutoff in and of themselves, but they are designed to be placed under the eaves of the roof line, which will create a cutoff effect and maintain dark sky standards. Drainage is another area of concern and the existing drainage pattern north of the existing structure will not be altered by the addition. So that's the area closer to Manitou Avenue. Additional runoff caused by the new impervious surface will be directed away from the structure using downspouts that will discharge either into the park area or into the building's perimeter drain. The city engineer has determined that the existing turf will be able to handle the runoff caused by the addition. And will actually be increasing drainage around the building as it, as opposed to how it currently is. So it'll be creating a perimeter drain around that southern border, so like kind of the highest elevation on the site and that will catch a lot of the runoff. Um, I did mention parking. At the beginning of this project in 2020, it was decided not to add additional parking on site in order to preserve as much of the kind of parkland as possible. And, uh, the recently adopted LUDC states that minimum parking requirements can be reduced to zero on sites within, within the historic district, which this is. Our, this design exceeds that requirement and provides for one off-street ADA accessible parking space. Yeah, and again, that is in order to be ADA compliant. That site is directly to the east of the main, of the new main entrance to the library. So, um, right where Pawnee and Duke Low meet, there'll be an entry, kind of a driveway into that one ADA space. And, um, like I said, there will be a retaining wall there to help bolster that site to make it level. And I'll show you some, some of the site plan as well, once we get there. Uh, for geologic hazards, the site was evaluated in 2021 and the resulting report indicated that the project is feasible. The report did not indicate that the site had any known hazards requiring mitigation and stated that subsurface conditions encountered at the site during the field exploration did not find conditions that would preclude the construction of the project as planned. One of the borings taking from, taken from the site indicated that loose soils might exist approximately 10 feet below the surface. And if those are encountered, essentially we remove that looser and replace it with structurally sound, uh, structurally structural film materials, excuse me, and compact that. And that's a fairly standard approach to loose soils. So that, um, was pretty much what we expected to find there. The review process going forward, um, so as I said, those are kind of the main points of concern. Um, I'm happy to go into any of the other findings or review criteria from the staff report if, if requested. Um, but just to give you an idea of the review process, this proposal was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission in November 2nd of 2022. And, um, you all are hearing it tonight, uh, for the planning commission and then should planning commission approve it, we have a tentative, we have it tentatively scheduled for March 7th before city council. And let me see if I can pull up our site plan really quickly. So here you can see the site. Uh, this is actually the landscape plan. And I find it's the, the easiest to kind of see where the, the structure is. So following my mouse here is the main library. Um, it's kind of this, this whole area. We have the two-story addition to the south of it. And again, that will house the ADA lift. And this larger portion of the structure to the west, which is the garden level addition that has the rooftop patio. That rooftop patio will be ADA accessible because, um, again, this, this portion connecting the southern part of the addition with the, with the existing structure is going to be the new main entrance. It is at grade with the ADA driveway and entry here. And it's kind of just a pass through uh, part of the structure that goes directly onto the rooftop patio. Again, I'll pass it over to Leanna to explain in more detail about the design. Um, but that concludes my portion of the presentation. If anyone has any questions.
Okay, any questions for the staff before we move to the applicant?
Chelsea, when do you think construction will start if this gets approved?
Once we have funding. So city council did, um, recently allocate an additional one. So city council did um, recently allocate an additional one million dollars for this project, and we will be seeking grant funding uh, to um, get us as close as we can, and then a loan for the remaining amount. Uh, we are hoping to break ground by the end of 2023, uh, depending on grant cycles and other funding.
Um, um. Harper, I see him.
Yes, Chelsea, uh, two questions. One was, uh, you talked about the lighting, and I think I heard you say that in order to mitigate the frosted glass domes, that they would be placed underneath, and that that does meet dark sky criteria?
Uh, to my understanding, yes, and it, they won't be in like, directly under the eaves, the eaves will be quite a bit higher than the fixtures. Um, the fixtures will be placed similarly to how they are on the uh, existing historic structure.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the second question, and, and I'm, I'm new to the, the commission, so forgive me if this is uh, going beyond this, but uh, you mentioned that there's going to be one ADA space, I could see where that's in the design, and I, I'm taking that that, that meets the minimum for ADA requirements. Uh, in all of our reviews with the citizens of the, of the city of Manitou, uh, going through all this expense and all this effort to create an ADA compliant building, does meeting the minimum actually serve our citizens the best? I mean, did we get feedback on the number of citizens that might actually use an ADA space? Just, just curious.
Um, so most of that conversation happened before Hannah and I were on board. From what we've heard from the task force, that was what was kind of a happy medium between, um, you know, taking up the whole site for parking, um, especially noting that the whole site is on, on a slope, so it would really take a great deal of effort and construction and um, it to, to build more ADA spaces. Um, given that this is a public facility, it does need to be ADA compliant. This, this would meet that requirement um, while allowing the, the citizens to continue to use it. Um, it's not a perfect solution, but um, as, as we like to say, the whole town is built on a hill, so it's kind of hard to, to meet a lot of those standards and ideals.
Yeah, I, I understand that. It's just anytime that we have the opportunity with new construction to better what we have, it just means, seems to make sense to, to spend that incremental cost to, to be able to meet at least two spaces. Uh, one space, I, I don't know about you, but I look around the room and around our town, uh, we're not a, we're, we're an aging population. And uh, this is only going to become more of a concern for people, so thank you for answering my question.
Anyone else? Gloria?
Hi, Chelsea. When you were discussing the landscape plan, you mentioned that the uh, hillside and the park areas would be maintained to the extent possible. Could you say a little bit more about what that means?
Sure, and let me see what I can find. Because I know we have drawings that indicate what the limit of disturbance is. Um. So here's a good visual representation. Essentially, we, we need to level out a certain amount of the site in order to build the addition, and to have that become a true garden level where you can exit out the front of it um, on the north facade. And at the same time, uh, we have created a retaining wall in this area in order to preserve uh, these trees over on the edge here. Um, I don't know if, maybe this is a little bit better. Um, so this whole area that's shaded in is the limit of disturbance, and that's the area that will receive new landscaping. Everything outside of that will be uh, preserved as it exists currently. Uh, another reason to have part of this, um, this area needs to be leveled is um, just maneuvering equipment during construction. And so having that be within the limit of disturbance is, is how that is made possible.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, um, we can, um, let's move on to our applicant, uh, our applicant's representative.
Hey, um, yeah, so I will go ahead and share my screen, and let me know if anyone has any issues seeing it. Um, let me see if I can go ahead and make this a little bigger for everyone to see. Here we go. All right, so I'll just kind of go through the submittal packet that we put together, um, the city. So I just want to kind of touch base. I know they introduced the project already. And talked about the building, noticed that it is on a prominent park in downtown Manitou, so just making note of the historic significance of the building as well as of its space within the park. Um, you know, we can kind of go through, there's, there's some details about the amount of hardscape that we are adding to the park, which we're trying to keep as minimal as possible, but with the um, main effort of providing that accessible route um, to access the library, as that is the main reason for the renovation. Um, and then we'll get into uh, just some existing photos, you can kind of get a better sense of what the site looks like today. There is a significant amount of um, this grass area, which um, was a very big point to be maintained. Uh, maintain as much of that grass lawn as we possibly can, uh, which also led the way into what the design shaped up to be. Um, as Chelsea mentioned, we have, um, basically the building is doubling in size. We have it about existing um, three thousand square foot, we're putting a three thousand square foot addition. So we're providing a lot more facilities for the library to utilize. You can just see kind of a brief idea of how we are referencing the Secretary of the Interior standards and following those in terms of the building design. Um, so one thing to note is that building additions to historic structures need to be um, of their own time, but in character with the existing building. So we wanted to make sure that we're in keeping with the historic structure, but also providing something that is modern and is of its own time, and is providing the needs of the community and of the library. Um, so we just kind of have a lot of images of what that's going to look like. Here's another graphic kind of showing that increased presence on the site. Another thing to note is that we really took special care to maintain, there was only one existing opening to this historic site wall. And a, a driving point in the location of the accessible space and access to the building was to maintain that as the only opening, so we don't have to cut into that historic site wall. Um, so that was another important part that influenced the use and the layout um, of the addition. And so here you can kind of see, you know, it's just a reference, representation of that site wall, but what the new entrance will look like. Uh, we wanted to make sure to give that prominence to call attention um, by providing a glazed entrance that kind of gives attention to the vestibule and provides wayfinding on the site, just so that users will know where the building entrance is, especially since we have that existing um, entry vestibule that is not accessible. So we wanted to make sure to highlight this as something that was different, to call attention, to make sure that um, users would know where on the site to go. Um, and this just kind of shows how the building will be dug into the hillside to provide you know, minimal impact on the site. This, this here does not show that retaining wall, this isn't a little bit of an older rendering, but um, we did end up needing to add a slight retaining wall on that west side in order to not um, let the construction barrier dig into those existing trees. So we wanted to make sure that those were maintained. It's just some more images, kind of a comparison of the existing building versus what the addition will look like maintaining um, the character on the upper level. And then the lower level, you can really see how kind of subservient the addition is to the existing building, and really minimizing the impact on the site. And then we can get into a little bit here, um, detailing and materiality staying true to the existing materials. The addition will also be brick. We'll have some detailing that is reminiscent of the existing building. Um, for the upper story, um, we are proposing a clay tile roof, but in a more ma- modern profile, so flat panel, so we're maintaining not only the look of the historic clay tile roof, but also the performance in terms of snow loads. Um, being mindful that the clay roof has a certain performance in terms of dealing with snow loads, and we wanted to maintain that for the addition. Um, she mentioned there are some notable eaves on the historic structure, so we're maintaining those on the upper level addition as well. Um, here just kind of talking about how um, we are providing something that is similar but of its own time, so the materiality of the windows would be more modern aluminum aesthetic, but in keeping with the design and the um, scale of the existing windows. And then here is the roof deck material, so it will be a um, a walkable roof on top of the addition as it's suns below gra- below graves, excuse me. Um, and so we're provo- proposing some concrete pavers, and the idea for those is that they will reference the existing colored concrete throughout the rest of the site. So that's kind of a, a visual process of you know, the, some of the more um, aesthetic properties of the addition. And then let me get back into um, our other documents, so we can kind of go through the drawings that were put together. Uh, let's see. One second. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to go page to page, so bear with me. And so you can see here, we've got, um, and you know, we can look, look, get into these further if we need to get through the details, but and we've just kind of analyzed the existing site plan. This was existing conditions provided for reference only, um, not part of our design package. And then we get into the proposed grading plan, so really kind of sticking true with the existing grading as much as possible. Uh, this kind of shows the new accessible route that will be provided to that roof deck, accessible route provided to the lower level addition, and then the route that comes in. Um, so there'll be some minor modifications to the existing sidewalk at that existing opening, and then um, minimal grading so that we're compliant with the ADA requirements um, all along that existent and um, proposed new entrance from the accessible space to the new entry vestibule. Here we have the utility plan, um, don't need to get into those details unless somebody really wants to, um. And then we can kind of show the site preparation plan, as Chelsea mentioned, kind of showing the limit of disturbance, trying to keep it as close to the building as possible. And then here we have um, some site plan features to show a little more detail of this roof terrace, showing the pavers, showing um, you know, the accessible parking space, a little bit of materiality of what that will be, how we're going to modify, you know, the existing sidewalk to match what's there, but go around this new retaining wall to keep that circulation route true to what is existing. And then showing how we're proposing some landscaping to go along with the existing building and go along with the existing site features, but also um, kind of help set the addition into the site. And then here we've just got a let's see, some elevations, just kind of show additional clarification of this proposed addition, how the height is referencing to the existing building, but not going on top of it. Um, kind of keeping aligned with the same geometry of the existing building. And then here we have the lighting plans to go and show um, basically the lighting levels all around the site with the proposed additional light fixtures. And then as Chelsea mentioned, um, this is the existing fixture on the historic building. Um, and our electrical engineer has worked to find a fixture that he thinks will be um, comparable to the historic fixture, repres- um, referencing it in terms of construction and functionality. Um, and as Chelsea mentioned, keeping it mounted beneath those roof eaves to maintain the functionality and the dark skies. And that is our submission package.
Okay, are there any questions for the? Gloria? I think you're muted.
Uh, hi Leanna, it's Gloria Latimer. I have one question about the ADA parking space.
Sure.
It appears that there's a, a wall around that door, a barrier around that is that doesn't seem like a good idea to me.
I guess I'm not quite following your, um, your train of thought, so the, this wall here to the north of the parking space?
Well, it loo- looks like the, the parking space is um, surrounded by a, a maybe a four-foot wall. Is that true?
No, the um, the idea with that retaining wall, I'm sorry, let me try to find a better image of it. The idea of this retaining wall is we need, we need a retaining wall to hold the grade up, so we have a level surface for that ADA parking space.
Yeah.
And what we are proposing is that um, inside of, inside of the wall, we will have landscaping so that that is not a walkable area, it is not an area that is intended for people to be accessing. Um, so we're mitigating any fall protection issues there. Um, and then we're also able to maintain that access path of the sidewalk here that will slope to follow the existing grade. Is that what you were asking about?
Yeah, that, that's helpful. Maybe I'm looking, just looking at a, a, a different picture. And uh, to Mr. Johnson's point, is it possible at this point to add an additional parking place for ADA compliance?
That gets a little bit tricky um, in terms of site allocation and what we're providing. Um, I think a big focus for us in determining, coming up with this solution was maintaining the existing circulation routes within the site. So this, you know, maintaining this sidewalk, this access point from the existing opening in the site wall um, was a key component, and based on maintaining that, we're really limited in the amount of space we have um, on the site.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I also note on page sixteen, you estimate a thirteen-week uh, construction timeframe, and I know we're a long ways out from starting this project, but uh, how reasonable is that?
You know, for um, for these types of projects, we generally look at like a three-month timeframe. Um, you know, depending on lead times, I think that would be the biggest factor for consideration. Um, I know things are starting to improve, but it's still a big point of getting mechanical equipment, getting some of those other long lead items can be an issue, which would push construction out a little bit, depending on how we can phase it, or or how we could work on um, trying to get some of those long lead items ahead of time.
All right, uh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, Mike?
Um, yes, I was wondering if, if it makes sense, or if we could put another handicap parking spot on the street right at Duke Low and Pawnee in that part, in that existing parking lot?
Kind of in this corner here?
Yes.
I think the issue there is going to be grading, um, just because then you're kind of opening a can of worms of, are you trying to regrade that existing street, the existing parking spaces in order to provide that two percent level surface?
Okay, but all right, so on your drawing right there, I, I'm looking at it right there, so that is a dedicated handicap spot right there? With the wheelchair?
That, I am not sure how that is functioning, and I don't know if Chelsea or Hannah, you could speak to. That, I am not sure how that is functioning, and I don't know if Chelsea or Hannah, you could speak to that existing condition a little bit more?
Yeah, so that, I'm not sure if it's currently an ADA parking space, but it definitely wouldn't meet the standard as it currently is. It's, that area definitely exceeds the min- or maximum of 2% slope for both the parking space and the pedestrian island walkway to the building, to any building entrance. So we'll have to double check that that's not an existing ADA space, because that could get us in a lot of trouble.
Yeah, and it could have been that that was shown as inaccessible. I'm not sure how we got that in our, our plans. So it might have been something that was intended to be for accessibility, but it was never quite to ADA standards.
Is handicap parking the same as ADA?
Yes.
Okay. Are you involved with any changes to the interior of the existing library?
Yes, yeah.
Well, all over the news lately in Colorado Springs is meth lab being smoked in libraries. Even they, seriously, that the multiple libraries have been closed recently. And the headline in the Gazette just this morning was all about meth labs in libraries. And what Colorado Springs is proposing is, well, they're, they're doing tests to find this stuff, but now they're being proactive and they're putting some sort of meters inside the bathrooms that will immediately detect this odor product, whatever. And they've said repeatedly that that is infinitely more, infinitely less expensive than the remediation. In other words, you know, when you, if you catch it when it's happening, at that expense, it's much less than what they're doing now, because they're, they're having to totally gut these library bathrooms, it's awful. So that might be something to consider. And then finally, the, is the existing entrance going to be affected at all on, on the lower level?
This existing vestibule?
Yes.
No, this will, this won't be maintained in its existing condition. I think we'll provide, you know, some flooring upgrades, so I think it's got carpet, so that'll be upgraded. But otherwise, we are maintaining it for its historic integrity. And it is used, can be used as an entrance or exit, but it is not a main egress route within the building.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Um, Harper?
Sure, not necessarily a question, but a comment, a thank you, Leanna, for the thoughtfulness of the, the exit out of the basement floor. Once people come in, I, I think the idea of the, the garden terrace was to, to allow people to enjoy music and whatever was going on down in the park. But I also know that people have families and being able to take the elevator down and, and go join their families down on the bottom, bottom of the library, I think, is a great, great benefit to everybody. So thank you for, for planning that, and it looks like you've done some additional work on the sidewalks and the patio area down there.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one question, with the restrooms, are they gendered or non-gendered?
They are two unisex restrooms, we'll have one on the upper level and one on the lower level.
Okay, and I noticed recently there was some led- pending legislation that requires baby changing facilities in any new public restrooms that exceed $10,000. So is that in there, in the design too?
That is our standard, I'll have to double check and make sure that we have adequate clearance for those, but I know we generally try to put those in all of our restroom designs, because I know that is important. And I, I have three kids, so that's very important for me, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a new thing, I guess, that is coming, great. Any other questions? From the commission, okay. With that, then, you know, let's move on to, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment, now would be the time to do so. Rob Dannon, I see your hand up, and you can, you're welcome to turn your camera on if you want.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I don't see my place for my camera, I don't know. So I'll just go ahead and, and speak, if that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I have just a couple of comments. I'm, I'm Rob Bannon, and I'm one of the initial members of the task force from its inception.
And, I'm sorry, Rob, yeah, the custom is also state your address for the record?
Sure, it's 112 Kavon Avenue here in Manitou. And I want to start first with Harper's and other commissioners' questions about the ADA parking that's on site. That is something, there's, our task force has been part of those conversations, everything that leads up to what the hearing today actually. And way back, like Hannah said before they came on, and Chelsea mentioned it, there's been, we had several meetings, meaning we were part of city conversation with Parap. And at that time with Ratio, there was a discussion of one or two ADA parking spaces on site. And Parap had asked that we try to minimize any cement infrastructure such as parking on the site. They wanted to maintain as much park space and grass and scrubage as possible. So that was also part of, not that we as task force had any decision in that, but that was one of the conditions or requests that they made to the city and to Ratio to minimize as much taking away of park space. So I just wanted to, for all the things that Leanna said, and the reasons why structurally it's being considered, I just wanted to add that, that we were being receptive to what Parap was asking as well. And then also, as Hannah was saying at the very beginning, the, the, the original library was closed down because of an ADA complaint, civil complaint. And that's when our task force decided we need to formulate as a citizens group to make this happen, because this is our less best chance for this to happen. The lottery had to move out, thankfully the MAC took it on a temporary basis. And this was our opportunity, not only to make it ADA accessible, I used to be on the Board of Trustees, it was a conversation 20 years ago, but now the issue was being forced. So yes, this is addressing greatly the ADA accessibility. But the other part of this too is the expansion part. As was mentioned, a little under 3,000 square feet are being expanded on the library, so PPLD can use it as a functioning library, so they can have the programs that they need in order to function as a viable branch of the PPLD system. And so this puts us in league, if that. So we need to keep remembering that it's ADA accessible, but it's expanding it to be a functional library, which it hasn't been even in its original state, the 21st century. And also the park, now with this patio, I'm sure you all recognize, is going to be ADA accessible too, not just the building, but the park, it's on a slope. And so previously, even now, anybody who is in a wheelchair, let's say, has to be on a slope to enjoy the park itself. With this addition and the patio that it will allow, will now make the park ADA accessible too, which is a first. And so I just wanted to, to share all of those things. And we're so glad that we are able to have this conversation with you finally at this time. And the fact that questions were asked about breaking ground and the year of 2023 was actually mentioned, is it 25-year goal for the last 25 years to hear that mentioned? So I just want to thank everybody in their serious consideration of this project, a long overdue project, for probably the most iconic building in this, in the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Rob before he? Okay, would anybody else in the audience like to speak? Okay, Marcy? I think you're muted right now, Marcy.
Thank you. I I don't have my hand raised now, right?
Okay, yeah, that's right, yeah, you could just by, state your address for the record.
My address, sorry folks, but I am not a great computer person. I'm trying hard, trying hard. I, I live at 302 Sutherland Place for, I don't even want to tell you how many years, but my casey is one of my neighbors, a couple blocks away. But in any case, I appreciate everything that Rob just indicated to you, because this has been a work in progress for about two and a half years for our group. And I want to compliment Ratio folks, because they had to maneuver another employee over to this project, and she did a great job tonight. But I think focusing in on the ADA is very important, and I'm glad that you, you noted that. Right now, to be very frank with you, I'm one of those people who need an ADA building to get in and out of, because I have some physical issues. And so I appreciate everything that's been done to make it possible. If, if the building would have stayed as is, and the city has chosen not to do anything, I would no longer use the building, I couldn't. So I just share with you, I'm an example of someone who will be using that building, I hope, soon, because I, I can't use them, I use the library, of course, at the art center, but it's not quite, it's just not the same feel of being in a real library. I think we were very fortunate to have the cooperation of the art community to let us borrow a portion of their building. But it would be lovely to get back into a real library again for this little town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to comment? Okay, no, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, if there's no other public comment, then we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. And we can discuss. Anybody like to start or comment? Gloria?
I'll move approval of a major development plan 2301 at 701 Manitou Avenue.
Okay, is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is any more discussion? If not, then let's all, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and I believe that was unanimous. So this is a recommendation that will go to council on, hopefully on March 7th. And with that, thank you, everybody, and we can move on, is there any other business anybody has? Okay, and no notice of council action or update, so with that, I think we can adjourn the meeting. Good, and everybody stay safe, don't drive. Stay warm.
Yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, um, thanks again, guys, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, Hall.
Okay, and we're done, thank you.